Okay, so I have your attention please. So we'll call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. We are first on our agenda is to approve minutes of September...
October.
October. Well, actually, we have September 18th, which is the minutes from our education meeting, which did not make it to the agenda, and the October minutes as well. So I don't know if you folks took a look at those September meeting minutes or not.
I didn't.
We can postpone that if we want.
I move that we accept the minutes submitted for October 2nd or 3rd.
Is there a 2nd on that?
2nd.
Any further discussion? Not the education meeting, because we're going to wait on that because nobody... Because it didn't make it to the agenda, so we'll do the next one. There was no action taken in that meeting anyway. Okay, anything on the October 2nd? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So first item on our agenda is to amend the village zoning regulations. And that is to convert residential low-density parcels along River Street to residential medium-density. And we have a revised map. So this is a public hearing for a zoning map change. And I don't know how many folks are here for the village zoning map change. Okay, so have you guys seen this new map?
Tom Wissler.
Pardon?
When you say new map...
No, they haven't seen the red line map. They haven't seen this original map.
There's a red line map, which has slightly different boundary. Okay, so do you have other copies so people can see that?
I had like two copies in there. I thought we could explain it.
Yeah, we can actually share too. Can I share with you? Do you guys keep one?
This material is very conceited.
So is this different than the one with the black line?
Yes.
And did this come out? Because we're just learning about this.
Yes, like today.
Today. Oh, wow.
It wasn't revised because I got a lot of comments from the neighborhood. And I felt to address those comments, I just went and redrew the lines and looked at all the parcels and the lot size, et cetera, et cetera, and tried to eliminate the subdivided ones as best as possible.
And I'm sorry, Nick Burke, I'm an attorney. I represent Curt and Phyllis Garrish. It just seems that certainly my clients didn't even learn about this proposal until last week. And now we've come to a meeting and we're here to comment on a new map that is only being produced today and nobody has seen.
No, no, no. It's for discussion at the moment. We couldn't act on this because it's too much of a change to act on tonight.
Okay.
But it was brought about because of lots of comments from Curt and other people on this matter.
So given that, that what we'll do is open it up for comments, so if folks have comments on the village zoning change, as Michael explained, he redefined the perimeter of that change.
I'll send Matt some of his handout.
And I'm not sure I even understand.
I think the intention, I'm not sure. I just got this map this afternoon like everybody else. But the intention, I think, was to take some of the lots that this would allow to be subdivided with the initial map that was circulated and make it so that those were not included.
Right.
The intention being to, I think, I don't want to speak for Michael here, but I think Michael's intention was to make it so that this rezoning would not create more subdivisible lots, but would rather make the zoning match what the current lot sizes are.
So were all of the nine that were previously identified as being subdivisible removed?
No.
No.
Some of them, due to the circumstance of where the house is placed, et cetera, preclude the subdivision. Because they have enough land, if you removed everything from it, it had a blank slate. But with the house located on it, it just doesn't make sense. But there's one person that's asking for this. This would allow him, Hans Meyer, to subdivide. And then his neighbor has a swimming pool that would have to be removed and create a subdivision, which is highly unlikely. It'd also create a backlot. And the other lots, the Garrish and the Schubert lot were removed and remain as a residential low-density. The Covin and Van Meter lot on Mountain Avenue, the other end of Mountain Avenue, would be removed because they're large lots. The Jet Dickinson property is on the east end of this. The way the house is placed would make it very unlikely to be able to subdivide. And the same holds true of the Beal property, which just barely has enough land to subdivide.
Could we pause it? Could we ask maybe perhaps the board to present the purpose of doing this and why?
Just start over.
Yeah, let's just start from the top, so we can hear kind of the whole volume.
Last month, we had a presentation from, actually, from a resident in this neighborhood who was interested in subdividing his parcel. But in his discussion of looking at the parcels in that neighborhood in the residential low-density, many of those parcels along River Street are non-conforming. And so many of them would be more conforming if we changed the zoning to be residential medium-density. And so that was, when the board looked at this at the last meeting, it actually made sense. But, I agree, we didn't have a lot of time for public input. But that's what this meeting is for tonight, is so that we can have the public respond to this proposal. And with the new map, because this is a significant change over what was actually warned, we will not be able to take any action with this new map tonight. So what we're going to be doing is taking public comments at this time, and then we will reassess and figure out what to do. So, and what I will ask is when you make a comment, please identify yourself so that we know who's making comments. Thank you.
I'm Ken Van Meter. I live on Mountain Avenue. I was, I guess, initially, on that first outline, my lot was in there. I take it now it is not. Is that correct? Did I understand that correctly?
Unfortunately, I don't know, I don't have property names on these parcels, so I don't know which one is yours.
All right. But just to summarize what's been said so far, you're telling me that one person in the neighborhood is interested in subdivision, right?
That's how this conversation started, yes.
Yeah, okay. Supposing nobody else in the neighborhood is interested in that. Does that make, does that have an impact on you guys?
It is, it is worth discussing.
I just think so.
No, I mean, the thing is that we look at, I mean, we're, as the planning commission, we look at the regulations, we look at the zoning maps, we write the regulations and make changes to the zoning map. And so these kind of people, people will come in, and you will hear another one tonight, about somebody wanting to make a change that has impact on the map and how its property is used.
Sure.
So we will be potentially changing the zoning regulations because one person came in and asked us. That's usually how these conversations start.
Yeah, sure.
So this is a conversation, and as I said, it made sense when we looked at it because most of those parcels are non-conforming right now.
Is there any reason why they couldn't just grandfathered in?
They have already applied for variance and they were not able to subdivide.
Right, okay, fine. I guess, I'm sure there are other people may have the same concern, but my concern is that the neighborhood has a certain character to it. A lot of historic homes in there. Some are newer and some aren't, but there are a lot of historic homes in there. People buy property in a particular neighborhood because they like the neighborhood. And they also make a significant, for most of us, one of the most significant investments we ever make is obviously our home. And to see that eroded in some manner is disquieting. And it seems to me that it would be an erosion of the possible, a potential erosion of the character of that area of the village, and also a potential erosion of the property values.
Again, my name's Nick Burke, and I'm representing Curt and Phyllis Garrish, who couldn't be here. And they did ask me to relay comments to you about the proposal, which they only learned about late last week.
Did they receive any letter?
They eventually did. It arrived, I believe, the Friday of last week.
If they're in Florida, they're probably here.
They have expedited forwarding, so it only usually takes a day or two longer than when it's delivered to their mail here. But it seems to them, first of all, that, you know, the input until tonight's public hearing, where had the thing not been changed, you might have voted on a change, hadn't been reviewed with the members or the residents in the neighborhood that's affected, without any input from them other than a concern raised by one resident who wants to subdivide his property. And it feels very rushed, and particularly after we review the documents that we did receive. Even though Mr. and Mrs. Garrish didn't receive notice of this until last week, on October 11th, the commission forwarded to all of the abutting towns, the Two Rivers, Ottoquechi Regional Commission, and the Department of Housing and Community Affairs, a whole packet describing what was proposed. Wasn't provided to the residents who would be affected. And that's upsetting, that the people who were affected hadn't been notified when it was actually provided, information provided to abutting towns and others.
Let's pause for just a second and ask Michael, is that true?
I believe they were sent out, we sent it out, we sent it out to the papers and to the abutting communities before to make sure they get it in time. Then we sent the packet out to the neighborhood. I don't know exactly when the neighbors received that or whatever.
My understanding it was sent maybe on October 30th.
On October 30th?
Yes.
I doubt that very strongly.
So I'm, we as the commission don't really have anything to do with that, but we will certainly check that and see why that happened.
But it certainly gives us a feeling that this is being rushed through without proper time to analyze, to see what studies have been done to support this change, and understand what the impacts might be. Particularly when we take a look at the packet that was sent out to the abutting towns and Two Rivers and the Department of Housing, where there's a number of statutory criteria that have to be reviewed and commented on. And the comments that are provided to a number of these are just conclusions. There's no data, there's no analysis. As an example, there is a statement that there will be, it will not significantly increase traffic. But no statements to how that was arrived at, other than just a simple conclusion. There was no data presented about current traffic, no traffic studies about projections for changes, if these, at then, nine, I don't know how many are left, lots are subdivided creating additional housing units. Another statement, just a blanket conclusion, no negative cost to the community. Again, based on what? There's no data provided, there's no explanation, it's just the conclusion. The way the plan was drafted, there's a talk about this is going to be promoting the goal of providing for additional affordable housing in Woodstock. And yet, the way the original plan was drafted, and I'm not quite sure, having just received the new plan, it was a dog bone with two bulges at each end, nothing in the middle, specifically excluding the largest parcels in the neighborhood. So that just seems very inconsistent. And it's a direct conflict with your village and town plan, which has, I admit, a goal to provide for affordable housing. That, I think, is like goal number four in the housing section. But goal number one in the historical section of your town plan is that you're going to preserve the historical status. So there's a conflict there that's not analyzed. And in this particular case, my understanding is that this particular neighborhood is in both the state and federal historic registry. The question, I think, was already raised, why is this being presented? And the rationalization, I'm hearing it, is that this is to acknowledge or bring into conformity a number of lots. But those lots existed at the time the zoning ordinance was adopted and are grandfathered in. And there's no restriction or increased restriction imposed by having them as grandfathered lots in the current district that they're owned. All this will do is allow for a further subdivision of some lots, fewer than were originally proposed, I understand, but still leaving some to be subdivided, which will increase the density, increase the number of housing units in this particular neighborhood. There are plenty, I'm sure, other areas in towns that have similar issues, and yet I'm not aware of any proposals to do this particular zoning change to adjust all of those other areas. And there must be other areas in the town where it would be probably more likely to be developed for affordable housing than River Street and Mountain Avenue. I did take a look at all of the lots that were originally part of this proposed zoning. I believe there were like 26 of them. And I took a look at the assessed values for this property. The total range of all 26 was from a low of $166,300 to a high of $1,298,000, with the majority of them, 18 out of that 26, having an assessed value of in excess of $400,000. If this, you know, if these properties that are now going to be available to be subdivided are subdivided, nobody's going to spend money to develop these particular properties as affordable housing. This is not the neighborhood that's going to be attractive for that, and I'm sure that it would not be economically viable. Somebody's going to subdivide, they're going to be building a house of significant value that's going to be consistent with the other houses in the neighborhood. So this area is not going to be the site, I would expect, of your affordable housing From Mr. and Mrs. Garrish's perspective, this is just not well thought out. And while we understand the initial motivation, I did take a look at the zoning board's decision when the application for the variance to subdivide was denied. And I know there was a suggestion that the same goal could be accomplished through creation of a condominium with two units on the one lot that would not require subdivision. So while certainly we're sympathetic to the situation that that resident finds himself in, that shouldn't be the reason to make these drastic changes going to change the character of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Yes?
I'm Mimi Baird, and I live at 18 Mountain Avenue. And my neighbor, Jim Slager, and Diana Salvberg are at 16 Mountain Avenue. And they could not make it today, so they sent you all, I think you got it, a letter that was sent on Tuesday, November 5th. It went to Michael Brands, and you, Sally, and Lynn. And I'll be repeating some of the, in this letter, some of the things that he spoke about, but I think that helps make a point. So, to the, this is addressed to the Woodstock Planning Commission?
Yes, and it has been forwarded to both commissions.
Oh, so you don't think I need to read it?
I'll read it.
Okay, good, all right. All right, "To the Woodstock Planning Commission, we own the property at 16 Mountain Avenue and are writing to object to the proposed rezoning amendment referred to in the undated public hearing notice we received in the mail on November 1st, neopost dated October 30th. The proposed amendment is ill-conceived and does not follow sound governmental zoning and management practice. It appears to have been done in haste without supporting communication, studies, and analysis. The process used, the process used appears to have, oh, I said that, let's see, the process used appears to have been done in haste without support, I've already said that. The process used has a lack of substance, which would create a precedent whereby an existing zoning could be easily challenged in the future. What is the problem that proposed, the proposed amendment is trying to solve? If it is intended to deal with non-compliant properties or affordable housing, there are other areas in Woodstock where these issues exist. And these issues should be dealt with by town-wide study, analysis, and discussion, rather than focusing on just this one neighborhood alone. The proposed amendment says it will not significantly quote-unquote "increase traffic," end of quote, or have any quote "overall impact on the neighborhood," end of quote. But there are no studies or any evidence that this is the case. To the contrary, the proposed amendment would appear to permit at least nine parcels to be subdivided without any variance proceedings into additional small lots, shoehorning, shoehorning in at least nine new residents that could likely become short-term rentals. This will clearly increase traffic and impact the neighborhood. The proposed amendment provides no explanation of why the existence of grandfathered, non-compliant parcels as a problem, is a problem. And in fact, such a problem that it must now be solved similarly in this neighborhood alone, without any prior discussion or communication with the affected or surrounding properties. The delineation of the proposed new medium-density district is arbitrary and capricious. That is the basis for, what is the basis for the boundaries? Why are some properties included, others are not? There is no analysis or discussion of setbacks, frontage, access, or flag lots with respect to possible new lots. The proposed amendment said there will be no impact on vacant land, but it also takes the inconsistent position that it will allow for additional safe and affordable housing. Notice of the public hearing has been inadequate. A letter sending, a letter setting forth the proposed amendment was sent to abutting towns, the Two Rivers, Ottoquechi, and the Department of Housing and Community Affairs, dated October 11th. We are abutting landowners and only happened to hear about the proposed amendment from a neighbor on October 30th. Notice was neoposted to us on October 30th, only after we called the Planning Commission to inquire about the proposed changes. We believe the proposed amendment is an attempt to accommodate a single property owner whose subdivision variance was recently denied. To do that, this rezoning amendment is now proposed on short notice, and I'm almost finished, and would permit the property's owner's subdivision, as well as that of many others, to negate detriment of the entire neighborhood. For all the foregoing reasons, we urge the Planning Commission to disapprove the proposed amendment."
My name is Anne Prothers. My residence is 23 Mountain Avenue. We never received a letter, and the only reason why I thought was because we are not directly involved in this. However, I'm taking a different look at this. I'm looking at, because I've been redoing our house for the last couple of years, we had to put in a new sewage system, and we connected it to an antiquated town system, which is only six inches below the ground, and is compromised. And not only that, I also came into issues with the water system, which is also antiquated. And thirdly, electrical. We had to add more power for our kitchen, and we were told by Green Mountain that it is maxed out, the whole area. So you're not taking any of these into consideration, the infrastructure. What potentially could happen to this antiquated systems when you add more housing to River Street and Mountain Avenue? And that's why I am concerned about this. Yes, and then my question's also the rezoning. Does that mean we are no longer in the village? Does that mean our taxes get lowered? Are we part of the town now?
The village boundary is established. It's very different.
Well, you're rezoning, okay? And you're decreasing the value of the properties. But I don't want to get into that, because that's already been discussed. I'm getting into the antiquated infrastructure that the town has. And how are we going to be able to handle that with additional? I'm waiting for it to have a catastrophe here, really. And that was quite evident when I had to put a new sewage system, connecting it to the town's antiquated system. And that's also the water. We know what happened in 2011 about the water. And the electrical, from Green Mountain Associate Power, saying that it is totally maxed out in the River Street and Mountain Avenue area. That's what I want to bring up, that you should take into consideration.
Yes.
Good for you. I'm Catherine Harwood. I live at 17 Mountain Avenue, or I'm trying to. And even before I've been able to move in, two cars, not one, but two cars, have come around this corner, have missed the right angle, have broken a granite post, and ended up in my garden, leaving plastic bumper fragments and parts of headlights. That was the first accident. The second one took out a further section of my picket fence. So there is already an outstanding problem of traffic and traffic making its way around Mountain Avenue, where this proposed medium-density section is being shoved down our throats. I came tonight because I received the first map here, the black one. And to my alarm and surprise, I just picked up the red one, which includes three additional parcels that are directly opposite my house. And if there is increased density, even as condominiums or short-term rentals, I believe I will be getting cars in my house, not just in the garden, but in the house on a regular basis. This is a very narrow lane. It's absolutely lovely. And there is a public park with the trailhead to the top of Mount Tom, and the beautiful Faulkner Mansion, and the park, where parking is always a problem. So none of this is reflected in this, this scurrilous redistricting proposal. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Linda Snitty. My husband Jim and I live at 28 Mountain Avenue. And I would also like to introduce our lot. We have a 9,000 square foot lot. It's a small village lot that is currently in the 20,000 square foot minimum lot size. And even though the proposal would benefit us by easing some of the setback restrictions on our lot, we oppose the proposed rezoning. And before I give my comments, I would just like to thank the members of the Planning Commission for your time, and I know the effort that goes into all of this. My husband was on the Planning Commission in the 1990s for a number of years, so I know firsthand some of the issues from the other side of the table. I'm going to begin by referencing the October 11th letter that has already been referenced twice. And it lists two justifications for making this change. The first is, as has been mentioned before, increased opportunity for affordable housing. We... We have a case study right in our neighborhood that shows what the effect of such subdivisions is. And contrary to what is asserted in that October 11th letter, it does not move in the direction of making our homes more affordable. If you are familiar with River Street, number 13, at the far side of the cemetery as you're going through the -- toward the iron bridge away from the covered bridge, on the left-hand side of the street, there is an approximately 30,000-square-foot lot that has been subdivided. And I was informed that the subdivision occurred before the current zoning regulations went into effect, so it was grandfathered. The front house -- there are two houses. The front house is an 1850 house of about 1,950 square feet with a, after the restructuring, roughly 20,000-square-foot lot. The back house is new construction. It's quite a large house. And the total lot for those two buildings was originally was 30,000 square feet, maybe 32, anyway, in that area. So if you pass by that area, you will see -- oh, and pardon me, the smaller brown house, 1,920 square feet, is currently on the market for $698,000. Not exactly within the category of affordable housing and certainly not complying with the state statute definition of what affordable housing is. Secondly, the October 11th letter refers to many, if not most, of the properties being overzoned, which means that ours is overzoned, that we are in the minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, even though our lot size is only about 9,000 square feet. However, if you look at the properties that are actually in that zone, the -- one of the ones that is continuing in the new map, the one that was just distributed, and belongs to, I believe, the person who originally petitioned the board regarding this matter, that lot is over 30,000 square feet. That means it's larger than our neighbor's lot, which runs from River Street to Mountain Avenue, the full length, our lot plus an additional 4,000 square feet. 30,000 square feet is not overzoned. In fact, you could argue it's underzoned. Secondly, all of these properties are, of course, within an historic district. We are on the historic district is on both the Vermont State Register and the federal, the National Register of Historic Districts. The requirements for getting on those registers are the same. If, and I haven't had a chance to count the number of potentially subdividable lots under the new map, there were nine in the old. You add nine units of relative -- of new construction in -- out of 26 lots that are being rezoned, that's over a third. That is definitely going to have an impact on the historic nature of our district and on the visually historic nature of our district. Further, the town plan specifically says that its purpose is to protect the historical settlement pattern. Rezoning a third and adding and adding new construction to a third of a small number of lots is not protecting the historical settlement pattern, in my view. Any changes are supposed to have a rational pattern of development concerning both the aesthetic and the historic value of the district. The visual environment includes both structures, the homes themselves, and the natural environment. And our town plan identifies this as the natural foundation of the -- or the foundation of the identity, the assets, and the future of the Village of Woodstock. People are attracted to our village because of its beauty, because of its historic significance, because it is complementary with our adjacent national park that itself emphasizes conservation and preservation. And finally, the town plan specifically states that the spaces between buildings are of equal importance to the buildings themselves in our district. This will only decrease spaces between the buildings. The October 11th -- I mean, the notice issue has already been mentioned. Our -- the posting of our notice wa -- and I saved the envelope, was October 28th. You've already heard that another neighbor's posting was October 30th. That is -- those are roughly over two and a half, almost three weeks after the October -- the October 11th letter. The October 11th letter contained background information about the purpose and the impact, potential impact of the zoning. We received, the residents received, none of that information. So I encourage the Planning Commission to give all of these aspects serious thought and also to, not here and now, but to justify why a 30,000-square-foot lot that happens to belong to the original petitioner is still included in the redrawn map when it would be very easy to exclude it and when smaller maps have -- I mean, smaller lots have already been excluded by the newest map. Thank you very much for listening to my comments.
Okay. Any other comments? Good point. On Wendy Wright Maranin, 39 Mountain Avenue. And I just wanted to pick up on the historical district point that's being made. I'm in support of all the points that have been made with respect to objections. I raise a question or and/or make a point, and that is, in the original decision-making process, when this particular neighborhood was all grouped together clearly with smaller lots as low-density, it was intentional. It was not -- it cannot have been an omission or an error. And the best that I'm hearing so far is that it went about in the 90s. My question is that the zoning that we have now, before any changes, but I don't know that that to be true. But my question to you is, was this low-density zoning decision that was made, was the wisdom of that attached to the design -- historical design review, introduction of the historical design review process? Because I wonder if the wisdom of the two do not, in fact, belong together and should stay together.
I do not have an answer to that question. Design review has been around since the 1980s. And I don't know when these going -- 1990s, 1990s slash 1991.
I will offer that I bought our house happily because it sits in historical district and design review for the reasons that that offers. And so I continue to support that that consideration be taken in this particular case.
People have anything they want to say at this point?
No, there's no one who's speaking for the subdivision.
Well, no, it's not a subdivision. It's a zoning map change.
Zoning map change. No one is speaking in favor of that.
The individual called me this afternoon, and he could not make it due to his wife. He couldn't get a caretaker for his wife, so he had to stay home. That was what he told me this afternoon.
Next.
I'm just -- we got the new map tonight, and several lots have been removed, several lots have been added. And I guess I'm not clear why the particular lots were removed. I mean, if there's going to be lots that are subdivisible, that's of value to somebody. Not that my clients have any interest at this present time in subdividing, but a future owner might if this goes through. And so it seems to me sort of cherry picking who is going to be included and who is not.
So, nobody else? No other comments?
Well, I'll just comment then. At the last meeting, when we were presented with this proposal, as I said earlier, you know, it made sense. I mean, we are struggling in this community with finding affordable. And when I say affordable housing, I don't necessarily mean low-income housing. I mean housing for average people. And so over the past, and I've been on the Planning Commission for, you know --
Long time.
Long time, possibly 20 years. And we have constantly struggled with ways to try to get more housing in this community. And so when we heard this proposal, sort of suggestion that we make this change, that was actually one of the things that I considered. It is an area that already hasn't -- and I'm not saying that, you know, this is a done deal by any means, because it's not, but these were what went through my mind, and you have brought up some other points, is that, you know, maybe some more opportunity for housing, in ways to subdivide and make new units in this community would be great. We also have design review, so somebody can't just come in and put up something that is not -- I'm talking as loud as I can here.
Can you invite people?
Nope, we don't have -- we don't normally have -- we normally have nobody here. So everybody can come forward if they don't.
Raise your voice projected, stand here, please.
No, I think I'm just going to continue on the way I am. I'll try to speak clearly, but what I was saying is that we do have design review. So you can't, you know, people can't just put up anything. This would be carefully considered. But I think that what the points that you are bringing up tonight about really looking more carefully, it was very hastily done. I agree. And this map has -- is changed, you know, since our last meeting, and I really think that we as commissioners would like to look at that again. But it's also up to the commission about whether we even want to continue at this point. So I'm going to, you know, having said what I said in support of doing it, I can see -- I can see definitely a need for studying it further, and I can also, you know, respect all of your opinions, and so we can decide how to move forward. So I would like to ask commissioners what they would like to do at this point.
Whether we want to just scrap the proposal.
Whether we want to scrap it tonight or whether we want to explore it further. And.
So from my perspective, we were really trying to accomplish two things. There was a particular citizen who had a particular request to be allowed to make use of the two separate houses that are currently on their lot, as two separate dwellings, so that they could sell one and live in the other instead of living in both of them. That's one concern. The other concern, I wasn't honestly so much expecting that this would result in a whole lot of new housing. I'd be very surprised if anybody could actually realistically afford to put in -- anyway. My concern was more that, you know, if we have zoning of a certain kind, this is your minimum lot size, it doesn't really make any sense if everybody's lots are quite a bit smaller. So the only thing that appealed to me was just trying to bring the zoning into, you know, line with what the lot sizes are. I certainly don't want to upset everybody in the neighborhood. There's no point to that. I mean, at the end of the day, our goal is to, you know, do things in a way that makes sense for people in the neighborhood. You know, to be clear, the way this process works is we come up with an idea and, you know, I'm sorry that everybody didn't get the information in a timely fashion, but the process is, we come up with the idea, then you all get notified and come in and talk about it. There's definitely no intention to do something without public input. The process is, come up with the idea, notify the public, get public input, and this is the time to do this. Thank you all for coming out. We appreciate that. I wonder if maybe there's some way we can accommodate the original request or in some other fashion that, you know, makes sense for them. I don't know what that is. We, you know.
Just to be clear, we cannot just --
Condominium, yeah.
It does not make sense for us to take one lot in the middle of a -- one type of zoning zone a different way. And that is the main reason why, you know, when this person came forward, they looked at the neighborhood and said, "Look at the lot sizes of all the lots around us. None of them are really compliant. We are big enough to subdivide, but we can't for this other reason." You know, think about it. Anyway.
Yeah. So the other thing is that we are also, as we work through some of our other issues that are on the table, we are supposed to be rewriting our village zoning at this time. And so that's another opportunity for the Planning Commission to really look at that in context with any other zoning changes that we may be making in -- with the village zoning. So my suggestion would be, at this point, is that we table this. I don't know how we officially do it, Michael. You'll have to help me.
You just.
And just not take it into consideration until we actually do our village zoning.
Well, as Michael Pack did last month with Stacy's request, we deferred any action until we had more information. Or you could just defer it until we do the zoning rewrite, which was my original intent on this situation, but you wanted it faster.
And so if we do defer it to our village zoning discussion, which will be hopefully in the next few months, we would love you all to be part of that broader conversation about village zoning, too. So because it's great to have community input. I mean, we sit up here, we're often in our own little bubble, but you folks come forward and make things and let us -- make us aware of things. It's very important. It's a good process, so. So I would like to have a motion if somebody wants to make one.
Come on. I'm just helping here.
To defer discussion until we take on the whole village zoning?
Okay. So a motion has been made to defer discussion until we take on the village zoning rewrite.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Done. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification. When you take on the village zoning, you will take on and take it on comprehensively and not piecemeal like this?
Yes, yes. I mean, we have already started in terms of rewriting, so, I mean, there are two pieces. We have the regulations piece, which includes the maps. So there is some adjusting. Every time we rewrite it, we try to do it every five years. It follows the rewrite of our town plan. So it's been longer than that, so hopefully we'll get to it soon. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to our next item on the agenda, which is to amend the town zoning regulations, and this is the definition of general store. So if any folks are moving out, I'm going to suggest that you do it now so that we can not get too crazy here. Okay. Again, this was a -- an amendment that was brought to us by an individual, and since that individual is here, maybe you could just give us a brief, a brief sort of reason for asking for this change.
Okay. So my name is John Endicott. I'm a white, I own a Tassell store. Store was closed back in, back in June, and we subsequently purchased the building. So our goal is to keep the store as a community asset, kind of a hub of the community, which has been for 170 years or so. Country stores have been struggling in recent years, and most often what you see is them being reinvented with some sort of food service, either sit-down food or more carry-out prepared food. So our -- that's kind of our vision for the store, is to maintain it as a retail country store featuring all the wonderful Vermont products that we can source in the area, but also to have prepared grab-and-go food, and then also the option for tables for people to sit and have coffee. for people to sit and have coffee. And again, for the, for the store to be, or the store slash cafe, whatever it becomes, to be a community asset where people can gather and go out.
Great. And I'm looking a little confused here, because I don't actually have the wording in front of me. I think everybody else is looking forward to, so.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping we have, we have it here. I mean, I can, I can probably dig in our minutes from the last meeting.
You were getting one?
I thought I had it, but I'm not finding it.
Here's the definition.
So, so basically, the change, the only real change then, is our definition of general store. So again, for those of you that are interested in the process, when the Tassville Country Store came to us and said, you know, "We'd like to, we'd like to change the zoning," we thought, well, you know, that's, changing the zoning map is always problematic, as you guys have discovered, that maybe we can do it in a different way. And so what we're doing is we're suggesting to change the, the definition of general store. So our definition of general store currently just says, "A small retail store selling groceries and sundry items." And so we're adding the phrase, "With the ability to apply for an accessory use of up to 25 seats for consumption of food on premise." And that will be the zoning change that we're proposing tonight. And that's, this is a public hearing for that. I will say that we have received two letters of support for this zoning change, and that's all I have right now. Anybody else? Michael? Anything else?
We have many letters of support for this zoning change from the community.
Oh, I only got two.
No, I copied them out, and I believe there's like eight letters of support. I just got three more tonight.
Okay.
Tassville residents?
Mainly Tassville residents, but people from all over, from Linden Hill, for example, was one individual.
Oh, I didn't, did they not, did we not get them directly?
I didn't get them directly, because there were so many of them, I just said...
Okay. So there were lots of, there were, I had two, but there were lots others, I guess.
I've heard any person's support, you know, I guess it's anecdotal, because I'm just saying it.
Yep.
I've had two individuals tell me they're excited about this.
Yep, yep.
And I haven't heard any negative feedback.
I have to talk to somebody who lives in the neighborhood, who is very supportive. Yeah, the whole neighborhood is very supportive.
So, yes.
So I'm Mary Young Brullo, and I live on Butternut Lane, which is just four doors from the Tassville Country Store. And I think just to echo what John, the new owner of the store, he and his wife have been trying to do, is to keep the store as, as the hub of our community, which it has been for almost 200 years. Seeing the store closed was really sad for all of us. Seeing it closed today is really sad for all of us, because it's where we go to pick up the paper and say hi. And I've had neighbors say, it's, one neighbor in particular said it's the one place that she gets to see other people, because she lives alone and she's lived here for a long time. So there's no doubt that that's what we want in our community. I fully support John and Jen's undertaking, and I think their ideas are terrific as a way to make the store viable because of other competition in the area for retail stores, just retail stores, quote unquote. And so I just am here as a member of the community to support them. And I think that changing the definition is a brilliant idea, and I totally support what's going on.
Hi, I'm Gail Childs, and I live in Tassville. I support it also, but I have some reservations that I'd like to put out there. The folks, it's, it's wonderful that you all, you know, Tassville says, "It's a go, it's a go." And then one little person who says, "No, it doesn't matter." But I, but I matter, because I'm the house that's right there. And I've had the post office there, I've been there 23 years, and for 23 years, no one's been able to do what they wanted. Charlie wanted this, the girls before wanted it, and you guys wouldn't let it happen. So now someone comes in, and everybody in Tassville decides, "Yeah, we want this." I love the store there. I'm really sad the store is gone. I used to go there and get coffee and muffins. But what I object to is the 25 seats. I, I want to know, and that might be a very creative way to be able to get them to do that, but they still, I want to know about the parking, because it's always an issue for other people. It shouldn't be this simple. Are they going to be cooking? Are there going to be food deliveries with the trucks that back up early in the morning? We get the fire truck, we get the post office trucks now. We've been there for 23 years, and when Mildred was alive, she objected to anything that was going to change Tassville. And it's a quiet community. And Deb Tucker lives on the corner, she could not be here tonight, but she does express the same concerns that I have, because she is in a Taft house, I am in a Taft house, and this is a Taft house. Those three properties were built by the Taft family. And it's a quiet community, that's why we're there. So if this is going to be a place where there's cars coming and going all day, I want to know where they're going to park. I would like to see a parking plan. Because I know I get people in my driveway and in the front of my house, just if the post office's parking is full, they come park in front of, they just pull into my driveway. And I just, I'm okay with it, you know, they're in and out. But if they're in and they're going to sit there and commune all day, and, you know, check their email and have a sandwich or two, I'm okay with that too. But I want to know, is there going to be cooking? Is there going to be a full restaurant? If you have 25 seats, does that mean four to a table, and is it 25 bodies? How many people will be coming and going?
Okay, so I'll answer that.
I have a real issue with that.
And I'll answer that, and this is that we have changed the definition. This is still a conditional use. So that if they want to apply for that type of use, they will have to get a permit, which then covers all of the issues that you've been talking about. So parking, hours of operation, noise, and all of that will be covered when they come in for a permit for seating.
Okay, there'll be a public hearing?
And so, and so our, yeah, there'll be a public hearing, and you will, as in a butter, hopefully you're not a diagonal of butter.
I'm right there.
If you're, so if you're right there, you'll, yeah.
I'm greatly affected by this, with noise, traffic.
So, yeah, so this is not a permit to let them to do that. What is, this is a permit to allow them to apply for, this is a change...
This isn't a permit, this is a change that will change what they...
A change that will allow them to apply for a permit. And so it says up to 25, and that, you know, and, and the Town Development Review Board will make those decisions about how many.
But yeah, just to clarify, what Sally's getting at, it's 25 maximum. It may be the case that their parking plan that they're able to generate will only facilitate 16, or 12, or 3, or whatever it is. And the process by which that will be hashed out is the development review process.
Okay, because I don't see where...
And there is a public input portion to that process, and as in a butter, you should be notified. So when we, when we wrote 25, our goal is to try and both match what other general stores are trying to do, and give people enough space to be productive without being crazy, basically.
I've always been in favor of it, even when the girls were there, why can't people sit there and enjoy a cup of coffee and make sandwiches? That's great, but if it's going to be a full-on restaurant, I have to really hear what the plan is.
So you will have the opportunity to talk about that.
Awesome.
Great. Yes?
I'm Jill Rose, and I live in, I own the Apple Butter Inn, which is very close to the Tassville store, and I wanted to speak in support of this change. I think that our country stores make Vermont unique. They're a wonderful asset, and I can't even begin to talk about the asset just to Tassville. And I think that this change is necessary, because the country stores struggle, even with food service, I think they struggle. And they're such a wonderful thing, part of Vermont.
And I, I agree with that. I'm not here to object to it. I'm here to object to the number and what it is going to be.
So any other comments about Tassville tonight?
Oh, I have one other comment, I'm sorry. If that works, then I'm going to propose a zoning change for that little square. Because then Deb's house and my house should have the same consideration if we wanted to put a retail operation in there. Just saying.
Okay.
I will be coming with you. You want it, make it a village, I'll make it a village.
Well, okay, I mean, well, you know, right now, it's, you know, it's a Hamlet commercial, and I don't know if you're in the Hamlet commercial or not, but it allows a, a country store, so, or a general store, so we'll see. Okay. Commissioners, anything further comments? Someone want to make a motion on this? And so, and I'm just going to explain one more time, is that as we make this decision, the planning commission may make the decision, and then if they approve it, it does go to the select board, who then has to have another, another public hearing. So this is, this is not yet the end of this. Okay.
Okay, I, I move that we accept the proposed definition, change the definition of a country store.
Oh, second.
Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, good, thank you. Thank you. Again, I will give you opportunities for Tassville folks to move on if you want, you can stay along. Okay. So the last public hearing we have on the agenda tonight is section, I'm going to get it right here. Is it 526 or 525?
526.
Okay, because it was posted somewhere as 525.
There was a 25 error.
Okay, and so now I'm looking at numbers, I'm sure I had it right. So section 526, short-term rentals. And this is something that obviously we've been discussing for quite a while, and there, I don't know if folks want to, me to go through all of this line by line. Do you have copies?
I have copies, I have 20 copies.
So anybody that doesn't...
People that may want one, I assume most of you downloaded it.
What is the draft date?
10/2?
Oh, the proposed amendments for short-term rentals.
We have it.
Mine says 525.
It should be, I changed, it's the same thing, it's just 526 is the actual number.
Yeah, it, he changed, he miswrote the number somewhere, so it actually is 526. But it hasn't changed, even though the date has changed, we haven't changed anything in the wording. So, Michael, do you want to just pass them around?
Yeah. I'm sorry. Look, this in, you sent the whole thing, I was part of the previous, I sent like this.
Okay, so as we open this discussion, I'm going to say, remind folks that this is, this amendment is for the town zoning regulations only. This is not for the village right now, this is for town. Number two is, because we've been talking about this for many months, I would like, I would hope that you would be able to keep your comments relatively brief, and it's already getting late in the evening, so ideally, if there is anything new, we would like to really, you know, if you have something that you feel is very new and different that we haven't already heard, you know, feel free to talk, but at this point, we're just going to try to move this along. So I'm going to open the floor up for public comments at this point, so anybody who wants to say something, let me know.
Morning.
Yes?
Hi, I'm Barbara O'Call. Can you just summarize where we are now? I know we've had many meetings over a period of time, lots of documents, you know, so on and so forth. Can you just summarize where we are, and then where we need to go after this?
So tonight is a public hearing. So the, the planning commission voted on these changes to the town zoning regulations. This is a public hearing for the public to respond. If the town, if the planning commission approves them tonight, it will go to the select board for their approval. And if there are minor changes, we can still pass it on to the select board. If there are major changes, we will, and we cannot approve it tonight if we make that decision.
But to summarize the changes, or what it is that we're going to be sending on to the select board?
It is this...
It's in that document. Can you, I mean, there are a lot of new people here?
Well, that's why we passed it out.
That's why I passed it around.
So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew what it is we're talking about.
It's section 526, short-term rentals.
Yeah, section 525.
Five, well, some of them say 525, some say 526.
It's dated October 2nd.
There's plenty more copies up here. Well, there's different dates in them, mine says November 6th.
Oh, a new one, okay, the 526.
So yes, so.
525.
So they're different, Michael tends to date things different when he makes mine.
Did she send it, we had it, we used it last month.
Yeah, it's the same one. Mine does say, mine is, my copy says 525.
Mine did too, October 2nd.
Yeah, it's the same one.
It is.
Charlie, there may be confusion with what Susan handed out.
Oh.
So I would explain that to the audience.
I don't know what Susan handed out, so.
What I sent you today, I sent you an email...
Oh, her letter?
Yeah, and she had a short, she had a read...
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
But she handed those out at the meeting too.
Oh, okay, okay. So I'm sorry, if there is any confusion, the, the one that you should be looking at is the one that says town zoning regulations, and there is a draft date on it, there were either a date of October 2nd or November 6th, section 526, and one says 525. This was where I got confused earlier. Short-term, so this is what the planning commission voted on at their last meeting. And there are items from A to L on this, and, you know, I could go through each one. It talks about the number of times per calendar year, it talks about owner occupied, it talks about minimum stays, there's quite a bit of information here. So if you haven't seen it, you want to take a few minutes to look through it, grab a copy so that you can have it in front of you.
Again, this is all on, I live on Paul Farmer Road, in Woodstock. Just a point of clarification, I have not been able to attend every meeting, it's gone on along, I've been to a lot of them. I was unaware that you already voted on this matter. Is that literally a vote? Because what's the purpose of hearing from us if you've already voted on the matter?
So the process is, the planning commission votes on it to go to a public hearing. So until we actually voted on it, we were taking comments from the public.
So you're recommending this, you haven't actually voted on it. Voting means you've adopted it.
We have voted on it, and it has been adopted, in the sense of, when the planning commission votes on it, it is in effect.
That's the way the law works in Vermont. Right, Kevin? Once we, once we vote on it, isn't it...
When the select board...
Oh, when the select, okay, so when we vote on it, it goes to the select board, and when, but when we send it to the select board, is...
Then a clock starts, but it doesn't become effective until the select board warns it.
Right, but when, does the clock start when we send it to the select board?
It becomes, effective at the, the least of the two become effective for, at the time of warning.
Warning for the select board.
The warning, so it's 15, no, for our meeting, so 15 days before our meeting, whenever this is warned in the paper, it becomes, it's not effective, but it, it, if any changes is there, we have to weigh both of the, of the current document and the proposed document.
So I'm going to just clear this up with our regional planner here, who's not sure.
No, it's, it's 4449, it's the select...
So when, when the select board warns it, it is in effect, as opposed to when the planning commission sends it to the select board?
Correct. There's it and your current regulation. I'm Kevin Geiger, for the record, I'm with the Regional Planning Commission. I'm not here to comment on this, except if I got asked. So when any zoning change is warned by the select board, they become effective for 150 days, along with your current regulations, and then it's up to people like Michael to figure out, okay, I got two sets of regulations, how do I deal with that in the interim?
Okay. So until we, until the select board warns it, it is still just us making recommendations?
Correct.
Okay, that's clarified. Is that okay? But we have already voted on it to have this public hearing, which means we have language in place for discussion.
So is there anything we could say tonight that would change your vote, you've already taken the vote? Are you going to take another vote before you go to the select?
We, we will take a vote tonight to send it to the select board. Go ahead.
I understand what you just said. Is there any opportunity for any of these points, specifically point number C, to be amended, or to be discussed, or to be revoked, or to be encouraged to reconsider?
You can, the public, I mean, this is why we're having a public hearing, you can certainly do that.
And how do I do that? What is that process? Just in this meeting?
Yes, that's this meeting.
Okay, so do I officially state my desire, which is to have the planning commission reconsider, at least in point number C, that they don't put restriction of the number of times for rentals?
In five acre...
In five acre and forestry. And I guess my... And I guess my reason for that is that there's never been demonstrated or any kind of convincing argument that that is necessary. Unlimited has always been the case, there's never been an issue, there's never been a problem. I think the thing that we keep asking, what is the problem? And in this particular case, that does not appear to be one of the problems, so I would request respectfully that the Commission review that point and basically make it unlimited the way it's always been until it's proven that this is problematic or, you know, whatever, whatever the argument is. And I don't know if anybody else has any other comment about any of these other points. All of the other points in this document appear to be agreeable to short-term rental owners. I mean, we're willing to do just about anything to cooperate and to register and pay fees and be inspected and to be the good citizens that we've always been. Our behavior is not any different, our attitude is not any different. In fact, we support the regulation, we support some sort of control or registry or some way that you know who we are. I think that was one of the beginning questions was how many of there are out there? How many, we don't know how many are out there. Well, this would allow us to register and let the town and the Commission know how many are there. So, we're trying to be agreeable, we worked on this before with other separate groups trying to come up with things that we would agree to. So if you would be willing to accept the fact that we are agreeable to all of these points with the exception of the one, we'd like to be, we'd like to have it reconsidered. This is when the owner is not in residence that you're talking about?
No, this is a number of days. This is a number of days.
Yeah, but what you're saying is it's unlimited if you're in residence.
It's unlimited if you live there, I don't think that's what you're saying, yeah.
That's what I asked.
But it shouldn't be limited if you don't live there. I mean, if you live 10 minutes away or 20 minutes away, if you don't live there, I think it should still be unlimited because it hasn't been demonstrated that if there is not someone on property, that there is an issue.
And you think there should be a limit on how many one owner can have?
Excuse me? No.
Should there be a limit on how many properties one owner can use for short-term rental?
No. No, I don't think that's ever been brought up. And what would be the reason for that? You mean, that only one person can have only one rental?
Well, the concern is, we have discussed that people come in and turn it into a business, just buy a properties and, or just-
Well, I don't know that that's been, has been demonstrated. We've had that discussion before and there doesn't appear to be any evidence of that. Well, then it shouldn't be a concern if you're limited. Well, I'm talking about two different things.
We were talking about-
We're talking about number C, which is the number of times that you can rent a property per year.
And you said if you're not in residence, and I asked, if you're not in residence, how many properties do you, is there a limit on how many properties you can have and rent out? And you said no.
I don't see how that relates to this issue, if I own one or 10.
I'm asking, you don't think there should be any restriction?
I'm not sure that I followed what that, what that has to do with this.
We have had this conversation about multiple owners of multiple properties and we know that there are some in town, so, and it certainly works fine, you know, right now, but I think what Eric is getting to is whether there should be any sort of-
This is when the owner is in residence, and you're saying that shouldn't be the case. The owner should need not be in residence.
To have unlimited.
That's what you want to change.
To have unlimited numbers of days of rental for one property?
When the, yeah, what this says now is when the owner is in residence.
Yes.
Right, in C.
Yes.
And you're saying that should not be the case. The owner need not be in residence.
I don't think the owner needs to be there. The owner doesn't need to live in that property.
Okay, well, that's, you're asking why it's relevant, so you want to take that out?
No, no, let's start from the beginning. I do not believe that a property owner should be restricted to 15 times per year in that district. Period. It's nothing to do with the number of properties that a person owns, it's the number of times that they can rent it per year.
But what this says is when the owner is in residence. Do you have it there?
Well, I think-
So you want to change that too?
Cat Gray, just to clarify and hopefully try to answer your question, I think the majority of properties in five acre and forestry right now that are active short-term rentals are standalone properties. They're not, where an owner is renting a subset of the property, but rather an entire property. So there are very few, if no cases, of a short-term rental in five acre forestry being owner occupied. That they are full house rentals. So there is no-
Well, we don't know that, because we don't know what the rentals are.
Okay, so you want to change that wording too, correct?
Correct.
So it's not just the 15 days, you want to strike that sentence, correct?
Basically, we want to strike that whole section.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, we want to strike that whole sentence, to clarify.
When the owner is in residence, the short-term rentals are unlimited. That is almost, it's, it's an unnecessary statement because most people do not live in their own homes and then rent out the whole home. They own a property, they live elsewhere and they rent the property. So when the owner is in residence, it's unlimited. That's very rarely the case, that there is an owner in residence.
That's only for whole house rentals.
Correct.
Right, so that's a difference. And that is an issue because we don't, again, we don't have those statistics and we'll discuss that a little bit more, but let's go, let's go get some comments. Patrick, and identify yourself, please.
Patrick Foltz, I own Sleepwood Stock Motel with my wife. Isn't the solution for what they're talking about, for them to be an inn or a B and B?
No, this is, no, because they're talking about, they're talking about whole house rentals, where, they're talking about whole house rentals where-
No, I understand, but the problem still, what the, I think what we were trying to solve here with the limitation was people coming in, buying multiple homes and running them as business. That's what I thought this, that was solving with this solution. So if you're, if you're, if-
There's no problem.
Not right now, but we're trying, but this-
Hold on, hold on, we're going to just direct questions to the Commission, please, and up here is the monkey.
The idea is to stop this from becoming a problem, you know, and, you know, you don't do, you don't not plan for something until it becomes a problem, then it's too late. So, just, that's how you do planning. Planning is done to anticipate what potentially could happen, you know, and you try to balance it out. And as I've said before, the whole thing with short-term rental is balance between, is it a business or is it somebody trying to make additional revenue, you know, and if it's a business, then it should be treated as a business. And that's, that's the belief that I have and I think that most of the lodging property owners who are businesses and run by a different set of rules, you know, and so we're just, the concern is that, and it's happened in Killington, and there, people are starting to do it here now, where they're starting to buy the loans up and turn them into short-term rentals. And, you know, it's a huge problem, not just here, but everywhere in the country. And so, the idea of what I thought of this was, is that we're trying to keep that from happening. So, that was my understanding of C.
All right. I'm Susan Fuller and I live in South Woodstock on an R5, so that's a residential five acre lot. I have been attending all of these meetings and I've heard from various people on both sides, I've gone to social groups, I've talked about the regulations. I see this as being, and I handed out to you tonight a set of papers where I have, and David has joined me, we've gone rogue, we've decided that we should take matters in our own hand and present something that seems to be very common sense, and this is strictly for R5 and R25. There is this catchphrase that keeps going around called level the playing field. Well, there is no level playing field between rural areas and village properties. Village properties are butt to butt, you know, rural properties have a lot of acreage. We haven't had any data and they've not presented any data that there's problems happening out in the rural areas. So the idea is that we just don't know, I've heard that term, we just don't know. So maybe if we just knew, maybe that would help us decide that there's no problem. So I have the blue sheet that's gone around, it's a very simplified approach to what you can do to find out just what the problem is, you know, if there is a problem, and that we could register, like a dog license. Everybody registers their dog, dog's the little tag. Dog has to come in and the dog has its veterinarian clearance, it has its spade part, it has its rabies license. Well, the same thing, we have things that we, as short-term renters, have to do for the state, so we'll bring that in with our little leash and we'll show it and we'll register. That should provide everyone with who's out there. That should provide you, Patrick, with who's out there. That, I mean, I'm just saying, it's, we are then saying who's out there. I've had people on where we live, which is very rural, say that they have houses that they want to leave to their children. Their children may have to do short-term rentals in order to keep it. Should they be forced to sell it? Because they can't, they're just now handing it down to their children. I think we need to be a little bit more cautious about how we treat all of our citizens here within the Woodstock area. And so, I would propose that you take a look at what I've set out, and as I said, I think that they're very minimal, I think they're trying to use the common sense, and I hope that you will consider those for R5 and R25.
Dan Sullivan, Sullivan, West Woodstock, Curtis Hall Road. I have two other questions. And these go to sort of my unique situation in a way, because I don't, I don't think it's been heard of. I have a large farm, I have a large home, I built a three-bedroom house when my wife died so I could manage my large home as a short-term rental. I built that home four years ago. My first question is, they're all in one lot, two houses, am I in residence? Or do I have to live there? Do I have to, like, keep one of the guest rooms so I sleep with my guests?
I thought we dealt with that. Are they two separate lots or is it the same lot?
No, same lot. Same tax bill, same lot.
We talked about that and I'm looking for a year. But anyhow, we'll clarify that.
And the second point is the six, maximum of six. I have no problem with two for bed, I mean, I don't want to have crowds in my house, this is my home. I've lived there for 35 years, I've lived in this home with my family. But I have a six-bedroom home. That's one person in a bedroom. There's no evidence at all, I've heard, in all the hearings I've heard, about any abuse, about overcrowding, about anything that has to do with mismanagement of any of the units. But arbitrarily, without any backing, without any record to support anything, you've arbitrarily said six is it. I have, I have almost a 100-acre farm, you cannot see another house from my, I, what the record is very clear on is that these two taken together, that the limited number will have dramatic economic effects on people who in good faith have relied on this short-term rental for years. I've been in this business for five years.
Right, and nothing has changed with your property?
I read this and I, you know, I hope you come to court with me if I get shut down by the next, I think this does affect me.
This is the clarification part we really do have to make clear, is that if you have a, if you have been operating as a short-term rental in five acres, nothing will change. We will ask you, your grandfather-
So you are going to recognize prior existing uses?
Yes, oh, yes, and we've said that all along, that's been part of the conversation.
Well, I've never heard from you, so all right.
So, so we're not changing any existing uses, we're just going forward, so even existing uses, we're not, we have no capacity to require people to do any of this.
Well, that was my final point I was going to make, but I'm glad.
So, so, I mean, ideally, we would like to, we would like to have people, you know, register and be part of, so that we know who's doing it out there, but nothing changes right now for people that have been doing, if you can, if you can show that you are-
The Department of Taxation, by the way, is doing a heck of a job on your behalf.
Exactly, exactly, so.
They know about me.
Right, and that's part of the problem that we have is that they're not sharing their information, so we don't know about you. So even though the state does, we do not get that information.
They should share it with you, that's ridiculous.
Well, I have actually been to several meetings in the last few months with our state officials saying exactly that, and they, they haven't come up with a solution yet, but we're part of this discussion at this, at the statewide level for short-term rentals and what the state can be doing to help us as communities. So, yeah, grandfathered uses are in place, you just have to be able to show that you were actually using your property as a short-term rental, which means if you've been filing for your taxes with the state of Vermont, that will, that will show that you were using it, so. Okay, yes.
Mit, just a quick follow-up, will that grandfathered use run with the land or will that end with the current ownership?
I can't remember how.
It ends with the current ownership.
I think- No, 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 no. With the current ownership, with the grandfathered use, you just have to prove that you're a legitimate use at the time the zoning kicked in, which was in March this year, with that five acre recommendation. So if you're a legitimate use, you have your state fire marshals office, you're paying your tax, state taxes, you should be good to go. So as long as that use is continued, and you could sell it because it's a grandfathered use, although there is no permit to prove that, that makes it difficult, that's why you want to document that you are a grandfathered use. So Dan and others that are, you know, the Fullers and others that do have existing uses should document that they are existing uses and they can continue operating as they have been, as long as they're operating as they have been, so.
Yeah.
But it's, but it's hard with a grandfathered use, a permit is much more legitimate stuff, but as long as you can prove you're grandfathered, then you're good.
So that would be convalable with that proof?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, you might want to throw in there that if you stop doing it for two years, you lose that grandfathered use.
If you stop for two years, yes, then you become non-formal, you're not forming a legitimate use.
Yes. Regent Leitman, Russian impressions, Woodstock. Also, my husband and I have two short-term rentals that we have. I kind of feel like we're really sort of not looking at this correctly. I feel like this is a different type of rental. So it's rent, we're renting a facility, it's just a short-term as opposed to a long-term. I just met the other day with my insurance company and I told them what I do, my insurance did not change at all. So I think that, like, Patrick has an inn, bed and breakfast, a hotel, that's completely different than a rental situation. So I really think that we're kind of looking at this in the wrong way, that we're just renting, but in a different fashion than we're, we're used to. It's just short-term, we pay taxes, we do everything the correct way, we have to follow all the fire codes and everything else that any other rental would have to do. So I don't know why we're not looking at it that way as opposed to competing with someone with a bed and breakfast or a hotel or an inn or whatever.
Okay, so, is there anybody else, a few others, okay, go ahead, Mary.
Mary McQuig, South Woodstock, and we, short-term rental in our old farmhouse. And I don't mind being regulated and having, you know, some stipulations, but I do feel like this is, some of these are a little cumbersome and will be hard to enforce, it seems, you know, number of people in per bedroom and, you know, number of times it's rented throughout the year. You know, I think that's going to be, to be hard, cumbersome. I realize I'm grandfathered in, but I still feel like I would like the flexibility going forward, like now, one of the apartments, we actually have two apartments, one my father, who's 88, is living in one. You know, I don't know going forward what I might want to do with that. Also, sometimes it's nice to rent out, you know, the apartment, long-term, something comes up, a family member or friend or, you know, I don't know, there's lots of reasons might come up. There's lots of reasons might come up where you might want to rent it long-term for a few years. And then, things change. And I have an aunt that is in a nursing home. She has a home down the road. Her children don't live around. They would like the flexibility. They haven't done it yet, but they want to keep the house. They want to be able to come and visit her, stay at the house, but they would like to be able to, you know, keep the house for now and bring some income in. I don't know. I just feel like it's, this is a little, not flexible enough. I like, I like better what Susan has put forward here.
Mary.
Yep, a couple of thoughts. One is just a reminder, Barry Moston, one is just a reminder that most of these regulations have been in place for over a decade. So, the five-acre or more, fire marshal inspection, those are new, a few other, but fundamentally, they've been in place. And you're right, it's, it's not to level the playing field and it's part of it and an important part is, is impacts on the community and impacts. And for instance, one of the, I think one of the stated reasons to do this is to protect community. With people coming and going, it has a different effect on our community and neighborhoods. Cars coming and going. People don't know who's around. And there is some data about even five acres or more. What I've heard is that, at least in this room, you know, I want to show hands or tally, but there are multiple short-term rental owners owning single, multiple, single-family homes. That's data and those are multiple homes that have been removed from the housing stock. That's a problem. And it's going to be a worse problem moving forward.
Hunter Melville, South Woodstock. I have a question on Section L. Is the Section 526 report a new document that has to be filed?
Well, it's been in effect for, what, two years now? When we adopted the...
And what does it consist of?
It's a fairly basic report. We hand out a form, if you will, in January for people to fill out by January 31st.
You mean they're available to be filed?
We send it out to the current permiters. There's permittees, people that have permits for these. Right now, there's only like five or six. There's not that many. But this is from last year. This year, there's many, many more due to this situation. So, but we will hand it out. It gives you the date of this day, how many times people stayed, that kind of stuff.
But that's something that motels and the Woodstock Inn are required to do.
They do not do that. No, that's for the short-term rental purpose. The point is for enforcement purposes to make people realize that they should be, what they write down, they should be complying with. Because many people do not obey the tenant limit per year or six limit in the village.
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Kate Nixon. I haven't been to a lot of these meetings. Tried to follow the minutes. So, I have a few observations. The first one is be careful what you ask for. There's an article in today's New York Times about many communities around the country that are now putting additional restrictions on short-term rentals. In fact, the voters in Jersey City yesterday rejected short-term rental proposals that were supported by Airbnb. And it's happening in a lot of communities around the world, recognizing that many of those communities are larger than Woodstock, significantly larger. We're still a very popular destination and therefore, the need for short-term rentals is as acute here as it is in most of those cities. It's just a volume issue. So, I would just say be careful what you ask for because a year or two from now, we might be having this conversation. The gentleman who just spoke about taking houses out of the market is one of the most significant issues addressed in that article. Also, tonight on NBC News, there was a story about Airbnb who is now addressing quality issues. And if we start going down that path, our reputation as a community will also suffer. So, I think as you look at these regulations, they seem to be quite simple, but I think you need to be thoughtful about, you know, what it is you're getting yourself into. I actually applaud the planning commission on taking this issue up because I think it's something that needs to be addressed. My number-one issue is how is this going to be enforced? And I suspect that if there was an actual survey done of how many Airbnbs and VRBOs that are in this market, that you would find that probably somewhere under 50% of them are actually licensed. And that's a pretty standard number around the country. So, you know, while I support the people who actually have Airbnbs, I lived next door to one for a year that did unlimited rentals every week, every single week, non-owner occupied. So, and I lived with the consequences of that. So, it's not a simple thing, but I think enforcement needs to be applied to whatever regulation you ultimately adopt in a way that's reasonable for the owners, but also protects those people who live in the community or live in the area next to them, recognizing that some live in the country. And then, just a comment about the 30-minute away. It seems like living 30 minutes is one, but how fast are you going to get there? So, I think you need to think about whether or not a 30-minute distance from the location should be a 30-minute arrival and not a 30-minute distance because you could get there tomorrow if you live 30 minutes away and if there's an emergency. And then, the issue of unlimited, I understand the dilemma, but I do believe that the more of these that come and your comment about, so how many should you be allowed to have, is going to have an impact on the community. And I do think it's a business. So, once you're not there, it's a business. So, just some observations.
Me? I have a question and a statement. My statement is you're, I'm not taking a position one way or the other on the village rights. On Item D, you've got an approval required by an officer with no standard by which the approval is to be granted or denied. And I just, in general, think that's bad drafting. You have to have a standard when you have someone approving something. And my question, Sally, is am I reading C correctly to state that you can rent one night endlessly, freebie? Well, that's what it comes across. That's at least my warped reading of C. You are not allowing more than 15 times in a calendar year with a two-night minimum stay. So, that's literally allowing 15, no more than 15, with two-night minimum stays. You haven't even addressed the one-night thing. I've got a loophole mile wide. Maybe defend somebody.
As a Realtor, I'd like to say that over-regulating short-term rentals will absolutely drive property values down. Your house is worthless when we over-regulate short-term rentals, and I'll tell you why. When you're showing houses, a two-year, a two-year sale cycle up here is not unusual, but it's shocking to people who are coming from suburban areas where houses turn over in a few weeks. So, when you tell someone, that's not unusual here. I've had houses on the market for up to five years and there's nothing wrong with the house. It's just, every house up here is extremely unique and it takes exactly the right person for that house. It's a matter of fit. There's nothing wrong with the house. But when they see that these sales cycles can be that long and then you're telling them, if anything happens in your life and anything changes in your life, you're going to have to look at all of these restrictions if you're going to need to Airbnb your house. They will go to the next town. They'll go to Queche. They already are. They're going to Plymouth. They're going to Queche. They're going, you know, any Realtor in town will tell you that they are already leaving this town because of this controversy. In addition to that, like Randy, I just have a few problems with G, parking, you know, it's a free country. They can park anywhere they want as long as it's legal. H, oh, no, that's not it. I, prohibitions, weddings, I get that. Parties, like I can't tell people not to serve a birthday cake if they're in an Airbnb. Science, I get that. Outdoors, outdoor activities, they can't play baseball or have a fire in the fire pit. They have to be indoors at nine o'clock. That's not enforceable. It was G, H, and I. Oh, F. It was F, occupancy shall be restricted to two persons per bedroom. Who's going to monitor who's sleeping with whom? Yeah, they have bunk, what, most of these houses have bunk rooms. Okay. Yeah.
Janet Spangler, I own 20 Lincoln Street. I have Airbnb at my house. My house is on the market and I lost a potential sale. They loved the house. They wanted to be in the village. I lost it because of the restrictions of Airbnb.
I can affirm that.
They didn't want to be in the village after they heard that, so they bought outside the village.
They're buying in Plymouth. It's all going to Plymouth.
Airbnb isn't restrictive, it's the town.
It's the village. I know we're not talking about the village, but just backing up what she just said.
George Brothers, 23 Mountain Avenue. Granted, it's not Woodstock, but our home down in Florida, we have an Airbnb next door. And last winter, for six weeks, we had a family of naturalists living next door to us. And to entertain friends and guests, including my nephews and nieces, it was a little bit difficult. And we live on Inland Water Way and people coming up and down, it was a little bit difficult. So, don't tell me about it's hard to sell or hard to deal with. I don't want to hear any of that baloney. That's, and who cares who sleeps with who? It's inside, but when you have to look at it outside, when you're sitting on needle and eye, no. That's it. I don't, I don't care if he was related to Johnny Weissman. You don't want to hear what he said, buddy. So, no.
Six-week rentals, long-term.
A party is a party, but they're not all the same. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'd like to comment also, Gail again. I'm also a Realtor and I sell a lot of properties in the state of Vermont, New Hampshire and Massachusetts. And what's occurred here is Airbnb was established for a simple room rental in your home that you live in. That's how it started. And then, it just kept mushrooming. They just sort of took over and I have the sympathies with those who own the inns and the Vbns because they kind of usurped a lot of those rooms away from those people who have a legitimate business. So, then VRBO got into play and I started to look, when I would go to Florida, I'd look on VRBO and then I started to look at Woodstock and I started to see, oh, wow, look at all these houses on VRBO. It is a business. And they really are the cause here, not us. And I think any human being who owns a property and can afford it, I'm capitalist, I'm not a socialist, so go make money. And if you can make the money in your home, as long as you're there, what I don't like is, and I've sold properties to people who that's what they do. I have four people I sold to right in the village and what they wanted to do was not be here and rent their home. They come, they keep a room for themselves. They come out on the weekend. I do have a little issue with that one because of the reason you just stated. It's a home. I can see renting a room in your home if you're there. You have a big farmhouse, you have an extra room with a bath and you want to make some extra income. But now, it's mushroomed into all of this, which has created this, which is good, okay? I've always done everything according to what I'm supposed to do. I have 10 rentals in town. Those are annual rentals, no problems there. I have one Airbnb in my house. They come, they go, they come, they go. Never an issue, never a problem. In Taffsville, there's four of them. They never have a problem because the people are there, they're in the house, it's the rooms. The single houses that I think need the regulation, I do. And I think there should be a limitation because Barry said it really well and I hadn't thought of that until tonight. As a broker, I'm selling a property and then the people never live in it, they don't become part of the community or part of Woodstock and their neighbors. I wouldn't want to be the neighbor of a person who's renting their house all the time with them not being there. So, this is bigger than what we're actually talking about here. And I do think the single homes, and it is a problem when people come in and want to buy a house and then they want to make it a business. Well, they can't do it here because of all of our regulations and they go someplace else. I'm okay with that because the neighbors coming in will buy it, live in it and enjoy it, send their kids to our schools and spend money in the town. I don't know. It's a, it's a, it's a catch-22. It's, it's this kind of an issue. But I'm all for the single, the people renting rooms. That's a whole different setup than renting houses. Does that make sense? It's two different factions here. So, I think more thought has to go into this.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes?
Hi, Eden Marso, County. I live on Harlan Hill Road. I think, I'd like to segue onto that. This town has fundamentally changed over the years. More than half of the people who own homes here don't live here full-time any longer. So, we don't have the community we used to have. We used to have lights on in houses. And honestly, given the choices, I'd rather, I mean, we already have strangers coming in for the bed and breakfasts and the inns. There's strangers in this town all the time, as long as they're not disturbing the peace and, you know, being civil to some extent. I'd rather see lights on in houses and people coming to our community and at least building our economy than seeing half this town empty at night. That's, it's hard to drive by houses all the time where you, like, you don't know them, they're your neighbor. You don't know these people at all. Like, they're not part of this community. So, I think whatever we can do to bring people here and build our economy, I think, and it needs some regulation, but I think if it's supporting the people who actually live here and pay their taxes, I think that's great. I'd also like to point out accessory on-farm business. Mary, this would apply to you and people who own farms, that it's written into state law that municipalities with zoning regulations cannot prohibit accessory on-farm businesses and part of that is Farm's Days. So, I brought that from all of you here. I know I've brought this to you before, but I highlighted the parts that were pertinent to Farm's Days. But that's, that's how I feel.
Yeah, I have a question and then a thought. Oh, yeah. My name's Alex Melville. I grew up here and I'm staying with my parents for a couple of months while I'm here. So, quick question on D with the fire chief. Is, maybe I'm missing something, but is that redundant because don't you already have to go and check with the fire marshal or someone at the fire department when you build a house and other parts of owning a house?
Not entirely. The current situation is that one may, the state fire marshal's office is not conducting inspections anymore because they don't have enough personnel to cover short-term rentals. So, where there's an apartment, they would look at it, but if it's not an apartment, it's just a house, they do not inspect residential homes. So, they currently have a form one fills out themselves and you can just fill out your own form, go through it, and there's no inspection per se of the premises. And the fire chief would stand in and do the inspection per the state fire marshal's ordinances and codes and that kind of stuff. So, that's the reason why we put the fire... So that's the reason why we put the fire chief in there to make sure that the inspection is accomplished.
I believe that was a select board discussion as well, wasn't it? Did you have another question?
Yeah, then just a statement from trying to represent a point of view of people who, well, younger folk? I think I'm one of the younger folk here. Yeah. Yeah, he's younger. I just want to kind of get that perspective out and my worries or worry. So for me, Airbnb is kind of synonymous with vacation. It's actually a verb, like, you know how you say, "Go Google it"? We say, "Go Airbnb it", oh, we'll just Airbnb it. And it's representative of the fact that when I start having kids, 10, however many years from now, I don't think, you can't base it just on me, but I think I represent my age. I don't go and stay at Inns. I don't go and stay at motels. I stay, stay at Airbnbs because it's warmer, it's already a home, it has that feeling. And I could see that happening, I would bet heavily that that would happen in the future. So, so if you regulate these, like someone else was saying, they're just going to go somewhere else. There's also sort of a lost opportunity cost there, because what do I look at when I go look at an Airbnb? I look at the stars and how many stars there are. And if there's more stars over in Queche or Pomford or wherever compared to here, just their algorithm, their, what I see, I won't see Woodstock. I think that's how it works. So from the perspective of a young person, I think I agree more with Susan Fuller's proposal. And I just think that I wouldn't, I wouldn't come here if there wasn't an Airbnb. Or something similar with short-term rentals. Could be wrong, but if someone asked me on the street, that's how I would represent 35 and younger, and I'm 26.
Okay, I'm gonna say one more comment, we need to wrap this up because it's getting late, we've been here a while.
I just have one quick question. Jill, how many rental units do you have at your house?
Airbnb?
Rental units.
Oh, just two.
At your house?
Yes, and in Airbnb.
All right, so three.
Well, the short term, Michael just gave me the CO on that.
All right, so that's three rentals plus your own, your own living quarters, correct?
No, my living quarters is the second rental.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you have three rental units at your home and?
Two, two legal. Yeah, what does, what do you, what do you get in that? I have two long-term rentals, mine and my, other, my tenant. And then in my place, I have one, I have three bedrooms and one of the bedrooms.
Well, I was just like listening to all of your talk about not knowing who's in the neighborhood and wanting more and fuzzy and all.
Okay, I'm gonna, unless somebody has something that's totally different and new, I'm gonna ask for discussion here at the planning commission level. And I would like to go back to something that we talked about last month, which was really trying to understand what the situation is in our community. And that goes back to knowing how many we have. And that's how this all started, because it was unregulated. And so in the last month, we actually didn't get very far on that. So I would like to propose to the planning commission that before we actually vote on this and send it on, that we do a little bit more research and, and dig in. The planning office has been doing some of it, but they are very busy and they haven't been able to. And so we don't have a list right now of short-term rentals in this community.
Can I make a motion?
Sure, if you, I don't know.
I would like to move that we task the planning commission, the planning office, Michael, with going through the Airbnb and VRBO listings and cross-referencing them to the property ownership records of the town and determining, according to several criteria, a few things about all of the available short-term rentals in the, okay? I want to know how many there are, I want to know which ones are registered, I want to know where the people that own them live.
Right.
Those three things.
Right.
And I move that we task out the office to do that and that we table voting on this until we have that data to make reasonable decisions on the regulations and rentals.
Somebody want to make a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion, I would like to say that in order to have this happen, I am willing to help. And I think that the planning office is very busy, this is a transitional time for our community. And I just, I think that we as planning commissioners need to put a little bit more effort into this as well. So I'm, I think, I think we need to do this, and I want to make sure it happens. And if the planning office needs us to support them in that way, I think that we should offer to do that. But I will, I'm glad to have your motion go forward, but I just want to make sure that it's something that can actually happen. We have to, we have to, we have to figure out a way to make this happen. And I think sometimes we're going to have to get the listers involved. And Realtors can also help us, because you guys know what the world is like out there. And you can, you can tell us, you probably know better than we do, who is doing Airbnbs, so.
It seems like it's actually quite simple, like every month, Michael goes through Airbnb and VRBO listings and sends a letter to people that, who are advertising who aren't registered.
But he doesn't.
He does that anyway.
Do you know who they are?
We do that, yeah, and we send letters to people that are registered, but we're not catching them off because.
But you must already therefore be quite familiar.
Well, do you already have a list of some of them? I mean, when do we start?
Okay, the ones that we find, we send them letters and they come in and get permits.
My point, Michael, is that you're very familiar with looking at the maps and doing this, like fundamentally basic thing of saying, that property there is advertised as a short-term rental. And you, better than anybody else I've ever met, know who owns which properties. And if you don't know, you're perfectly.
It is a very tedious process to go through because people are hiding their information, it takes a while. I will do, I can say we are doing it right now. My assistant is already on this now.
Over the years, you're perfectly capable of making all kinds of claims about who owns what. I just want to get real data to make this. I'm sorry, somebody's speaking.
Patrick, 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 excuse me.
Those are the facts.
Excuse me, right now we're having this discussion here.
He's only going to find.
Patrick?
You know, this is ridiculous.
Eric, what, Eric, would you like to say that again?
I said, why don't we get an outside resource and fund it through the EDC and do whatever research is necessary.
That's going to take, that's going to take time. I think this is something that.
We are doing this currently, and she is going through each little quadrant of our zoning map and digging this up. It is taking time because right now we're in a busy permit season. But in December, January, things are going to slow down, I hope, and we're going to get more feedback on this.
So there is a motion, a motion and a second on the table. To table, or to, what did you say?
I said that we defer voting on this until we have data. And then I think we should have a reasonable discussion about what that data tells us.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to keep going.
Are we done? Oh, I thought we were done.
We're not done, are we? No, we're not done.
Our garage is here, right?
Okay, hold on.
We got new business. Please take your conversations outside, we have more business. Excuse me, please take your conversations outside, we have more, we have more to talk about. Look, I mean, we're not going to make you sit here. We're done, we're not going to make you sit here for two hours.
You're on the attempt, you have to stay.
Okay, so, do you want to, do we want to skip over the site plan and go to garage versus discussed?
Sure.
The site plan is getting very important because
Okay, well, okay.
You're definitely, I've just submitted an application to build a parking lot. This site plan would be very helpful to have that criteria to be able to review that parking lot. We have another, we have three more other farm situations coming up on us real quick now.
Do you have something written for the site plan?
It's very simple, you just add.
Oh.
But do we know what it is? I don't know what it's.
Can we just get it out of here first?
No, it's, it's going to take a little bit longer. Did you see what Michael drafted for rural retreat? Here, why don't you look at that while he, he, it's not a touch screen.
Can you brief me on the site plan, what are the lists?
Because we don't require a site plan for.
You just have to add agricultural events to the site plan criteria. There's a list of site plan criteria in your thing, multifamily housing, commercial, agricultural events.
On site plan review?
Right. No, we would add under site plan review.
Yeah, which is which section?
Section 809.
809, which is page 63.
So you have no planning, no zoning permit, you should buy AAO for any commercial, industrial, public, quasi-public, multifamily housing, da, da, da.
Until site plan.
Right, until site plan approved. So if you just add agricultural event to that, boom.
Well, that does kind of make sense, doesn't it? This is where we go. I mean, people come up to us and they have these things that makes sense.
Until.
Until, until, until everybody else hears it, like, oh. But I agree, I mean, but can we regulate an agricultural use under the state of Vermont?
That is what we're allowed to do, is do site plan review. We can't regulate the use, I'm saying the conditional use, you can't do.
Is this a way, I'm sorry, I don't understand what we're trying to accomplish here. Is this a way to have agri-prenerial activities by having an agricultural business?
No, this is, this is by saying if somebody is having an agricultural activity that has, requires parking, that there is a way for us to look at a parking lot.
Landscaped the parking lot, look at lights, look at noise, look at stormwater issues.
So that if somebody, if somebody like a large firm in South Woodstock decides to have public events, there can be a site plan review.
Right.
And then, but, but the critical piece is that
Traffic and pedestrian control.
It allows the neighbors also to weigh in on, you know, they don't want people parking on 106.
So would that happen, would they do it like one time, scale their, that propose a couple of different plans for different size events or something? And get approval, and then the approval would run with the property.
It could be up to 20 or 200 people or whatever, because that parking has to equal.
I don't understand, I'm just wondering if they're, if they're required to do it for each event, or if they do it a few times. In different ways, to one time. So say that I want to get permitted for a 300 size of that.
Agriculture separate, it has to be listed separately, it can't be included in.
But the agriculture law does allow that. And I've been trying to get this pushed into the regulations for a while.
Okay, so this is a way to have some say about the parking, despite the fact that the state of Vermont says farm-based activities can.
But we're allowed to look at the site plan to make sure that is lighting is not, mainly lighting and screening are the key issues that come up. But stormwater is also an area where people do, which needs a little review. So it's just the site plan criteria that are listed below 809 there, so.
Well, it sounds logical to me. Sounds reasonable.
Agreed.
But it's a tool that we're allowed to use that we haven't been using.
What are we not considering?
I mean, so what, what is considered?
It's per the ag law.
What is considered agricultural, okay.
Per the ag law, that.
So currently, what sort of things are?
It just gave us.
Well, what sort of things that are currently happening that we don't review, would we all of a sudden be reviewing? In other words, there's not a feast in field in Woodstock.
No, there's a parking lot now, for producing was a 20-car parking lot, South Woodstock. He wants to put lighting on it, et cetera, et cetera. And we don't have any control over it.
No, I understand, that exists.
Is that agricultural event that he wants the parking for?
It's going to be for his use of the farm.
Oh, it's for the farm.
He has a farm here, he's going to invite visitors to come to the farm and do chores, et cetera, tastings.
It's like Eden was just talking about, it's these farm stays.
I'm just trying to get at what other, I understand in that case, that makes perfect sense. I'm just trying to gather other events that are currently going on.
And the same with Conklin, Conklin situation, the Conklin farmer.
The guy who was here last, right.
Right, the guy was here last month, right.
But I also wonder though if we just say agricultural, is that too broad in the sense of, you know, somebody's starting a farm and they have to go through a site plan?
I'm saying agricultural events per that law, that would just add.
I think we need to very explicitly state agricultural events per the Vermont law.
I do have that, and so.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't see that, is that what you're just saying?
No, that is part of the, there's a definition for that, I didn't send it around, I don't.
Did you write this, did you write, did you send this around? I just didn't, I didn't, I missed it too.
I didn't get this one, Michael.
I didn't either, like, I didn't get, maybe.
I didn't get it.
I see it on the agenda, but I don't, I'm not sure.
I didn't get the wording for it.
I feel like I'm pretty good with these two.
I didn't either, I, I was really careful to pull everything out and I missed that too.
Was it one of his reporting points?
No, it, it wasn't included in any.
I don't, I was really careful.
Seems to be happening more.
Yeah. Okay. Well.
I, I don't have any, I mean, it seems like a reasonable way to handle it.
It does, it does.
I mean, I don't think we can do that.
Well, let's get the language right, because last time we got in trouble because of that.
Agricultural events, yeah, so that.
But as a definition of what an agricultural, I mean, I think it should refer to, whatever that act was.
I think it's going to be in here, who said?
You mean the state act?
Yeah.
Does she have it on that?
Yeah, I don't have what it sent to.
No.
Yeah, it might be in her thing, yeah.
I did send it, I sent it for the last meeting.
Oh, for the last meeting.
Oh. Emails that old.
No, I didn't either, I smiled.
Access, accessory businesses.
Is that what she was highlighting? Accessory on-farm businesses.
Yeah.
Is that what you want, Michael?
Yes, here, D, whatever, review permit activities, accessory on-farm business that are not exempt under section 413 of the title may be subject to site plan review pursuant to section 4416. This is the law, the state law that allows us to have a site plan review.
Don't want to have some subset over there?
Then in October, I sent you the site plan language, and I included a definition of agricultural event, which is taken directly from this law. And I'd have to download it from the computer, and I don't have the time to do that. So we can kick this can down the road.
Accessory uses, here it is, right here.
What take?
I don't know, it's in my file for October meeting. Agricultural events and accessory uses, these are events and accessory uses associated with agriculture per Act 143, which shall be located on a farm regulated by the AAFM under its RAPS. And the operation must be subordinate to the farming operation to be considered accessory. C, 24 VSA, section 4413D.
Oh, perfect, seems to all define. It's the middle bit, yes.
Well, that's the language. So we can decide to do it tonight or we can wait.
I mean.
And then, then we have to, and then we have to add. So that, that's a definition for agricultural events and accessory uses. And then under site plan approval, we will add agricultural events and accessories.
And we looked at the wraps because this is the regimen, tried to replicate.
Right.
I mean, let's see, inherently, I just want to make sure that there's not something great going on that we're about to make very challenging. That's why I'm asking the question.
The public will certainly let us know.
Well, I don't know, I mean, this is the sort of thing that could slip through pretty quietly.
Yeah.
This is not something that there's a current, yeah.
Well, if we go to public here and you don't like it, you can deny it at the next hearing.
I'm comfortable doing that, I don't, I don't see where this would be a problem.
Okay, is that a motion?
It's a very simple tool.
I'm moved that we add the language, hold on, this has to be a little bit.
Okay, wait, do you want to?
Why, we know it, love to see it written down, is this what?
I have it too.
This is about it too, so.
I didn't realize it was for last meeting.
I didn't either. Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Came from Michael. Sam is making a motion?
I move that we add that language to site plan review.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Sorry to beat on that, but it's fairly simple and I think very important.
Okay, let's go to rural retreat, which Michael did send, and I do have that in my file here.
This is a very basic start, mixing a bunch of stuff together here, and I addressed everything in her situation except for the one forty people she, she would like to have attend from time to time. But I just threw this out as a start on how we could look at this. This gets problematic when, because we have to make this equitable to all, essentially, but we want to also restrict it, not have it be everywhere, because everybody could do something like this. It's a very, it's a balance here that's very difficult in this situation. I was gonna say dead-end road, no.
So, how many? No, but how many, how many hundred-acre properties do we have in this community?
Oh, there's a bunch.
No, but I mean-
I'd say at least twenty.
That's not a bunch to me.
That isn't that many, when you consider their way-
Would actually wanna go through all this to do it.
And, and-
Well, I know, but that's my point is that it's-
But are located more than a thousand feet, that gets to be a key element. There's many hundred-acre properties, but-
So, I would like to actually identify what those properties are.
Yep. I'm sorry, it's not clear to me here, are weddings permitted?
Yes, fifty people.
Nupial.
Less than fifty.
Did I call it nupial?
Nuptial.
Nuptial, nuptial.
No amplified music.
Rural retreats.
Rural retreats.
I mean, I like the, I like the idea, I mean, I think it's, I think it's, it's something that we could use in this community, but-
Absolutely.
I, I do wonder, you know, what is, what does it really mean in terms of the numbers of properties? And is, is that, are these the right numbers for it?
What's the rationale behind no more than three employees?
Where's that? It's under the next page.
Number five, eight.
B five.
Oh, no.
Um, that was picked over from the home enterprise.
Okay.
I, to be honest, I did start for the home enterprise and fold things in and out.
So, does that, do you want it to sort of relate to like how many people come and go from the property routinely, or is it, is it really just a holdover and you're not attached to it?
It was a holdover essentially, but then again, if you do have three employees, they are gonna be coming and going, and they're not gonna be staying outside, you have parking requirements for them and that.
I just always kinda wanna say, well, like, what if somebody wants to do a great job and have a really amazing rural retreat and, you know, have a-
Yeah, they only have fifty employees who are three people.
Yeah, exactly, but if you wanna have like the twenty parts of rural retreats or something, I mean, that would ostensibly be good for the community.
Exactly, yes, yes, yeah. And three is, yeah, throw that up.
So, do we need to limit employees?
I wouldn't even limit it.
If we're limiting the number of events, the number of people can attend.
I want more employees, I want more people who can call themselves a full-time employee or something.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the number of employees is-
What if you had fifty cars going up and down the road, it could be an issue.
So, but they'll still have to meet all the parking standards, so that can be addressed that way.
True, true, true.
Take the bus.
So, we're limiting this to fifty attendees at every event?
At the moment, that's just a start.
Okay, okay.
Okay, she wanted a hundred and forty for, I forget how many, I have that.
Yeah, I, I think that's the, that's a small, that's a small nuptial.
And, you know.
Fifty seems tiny.
If it was a corporate retreat, what if they have sixty, you know?
She wanted a hundred and forty was a limit for like ten events or something.
That seems like a lot to me.
Ten events for a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty, a hundred?
I don't know, I'm trying to get my Thanksgiving list pared down a little bit, it's pretty easy to get into like-
Yeah.
Well, tell me, I'm-
Where we're gonna put them all, I'm gonna have to rent out the neighbor's house.
No, you can have mine.
Thanks. I, I would be happy to see B six grow to more than fifty, I mean, I, I agree.
I would agree.
In my mind, there's something more severe as you get close to a hundred, but I, I think I could see that of being like eighty-five or something, not having an issue with it.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's pretty easy to get to fifty people for the kinds of events she's considering. I, I don't know, I don't run them myself, but-
If there were cases where it was a number higher than that, could you give a variance or some kind of special use to say she was contacted by Lucy McKenzie, wanted to do their annual fundraising dinner gala there, and that's a hundred and fifty people, a hundred and forty?
Yeah.
Caterers coming?
Could you do like one or two events a year?
Yeah, that's, that's-
Not marketing it every day.
That's sort of what I'm thinking, is that maybe, maybe it's a limited number of events, and that's how, actually how we were working with the integrated agriculture,
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Had a tiered thing where you could have, you know, as many as you want at twenty, but-
Yeah, okay, so, no more than?
Well, let's go back to that, go back and look at that integrated ag that we already wrote.
Fifteen of-
It's in your ordinance.
It's in our ordinance, no, no, the one that we were writing, that accessory on, accessory agricultural use.
Oh, that, that, that.
Well, we were working, I mean, we were, we were working those numbers.
No, we had a lot of-
No, no, I got numbers in there, but if you do five events at one forty, is that helpful?
That's, I think a one forty is a lot.
One forty's too many, a hundred and twenty?
Five at one twenty, the other fifteen at fifty or less. I mean, this seems like something that somebody could come back to us and say-
Well, I think-
I think a hundred and fifty's small for a wedding.
We had a hundred and fifty people in our backyard on River Street.
I, I know, I mean, I've done two weddings in the last two years, and believe me, a hundred and fifty's, a hundred and fifty goes quickly. But a hundred and fifty is a lot of cars too, that's the thing.
That might be the ultimate.
Um, I could look up the, I can't look up those numbers right now, my brain is not doing.
Sorry, I'm searching for, uh-
Two thousand nineteen, see when?
I can't find it.
What about, that was like plus March.
It's two thousand eighteen, isn't it? Integrated agriculture, is that what we're looking?
Town plan section, it's section, so, I don't know, I'll have to look it up.
First pass.
Here we go, nine twelve eighteen.
Nine twelve eighteen?
Yeah, um, sorry, uh-
I don't have eighteen on this computer.
Oh, nine twelve eighteen, yeah, Michael sent, well, I mean, I don't, I think that that's reasonably likely to be the most recent one, but I'm not certain.
There shall be no more than a hundred and fifty participants for any event. Event size shall be defined as follows, less than forty-five attendees is small. Forty-five to one fifty is large. There shall be no more than one fifty participants for any event. Okay.
No more than six large events, yeah.
Events at a given farm shall be limited as follows, no more than six large events per calendar year, and no more than twenty events, twenty events per calendar year. Overall event size shall be limited that the resultant increase in traffic to the farm shall not be unduly burdensome to the neighbors.
Should say such that, but I would be perfectly happy taking that, number nine, and putting it into this, because we did discuss that, that nauseous.
I know, I know, I know, we did.
I think it should be the same.
Oh, we did, believe me.
But I think we should-
I, I think those, I think those were numbers that we, we felt comfortable, I mean, when you, we start doing it, what is the season you're going to be doing outdoor events? And, you know, if it's six months of the year that you can realistically do it, it's really only five.
And in fact, number ten is quite good as well.
But that ends up being two a month during the summer months.
Number ten in that same document is pretty good.
What was number ten?
Numbers within one thousand feet of events, one hundred participants, and/or amplified music shall be notified by mail one week before said event.
Yeah, I agree.
We can, we can, we can get you this draft too, so that if you wanna, if you wanna see what we wrote for that one, see how it sort of catches.
We found it.
That wouldn't even matter.
We found it.
That's Stacy's email, what she wants. That wouldn't even matter.
Oh, okay.
A hundred and four, a hundred and five, a hundred and forty, so.
I like that one just by my push.
So, we just found it, yeah, we found what we had.
So, I think it's a good idea to be consistent, use these numbers, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree.
We spent a little bit of time on this other one, so.
Yeah.
And this one, the other one was for farms, sort of accessory events on farms. So, this rural retreat could be-
Is there a way to get a permit to do more than that? She's gonna have to tell people no, because it's, they're over a hundred and twenty, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's one fifty.
Oh, one fifty, one fifty's a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, there would be six events that could be up to one fifty.
Six events, so there's a limit on it.
Yep.
And then, and a total limit of twenty events, you could do fourteen small ones.
What, what is your impression about how workable that would be?
As a businessman, I hate limits. When you say limits, I say, why would I do it?
Yeah, of course.
But, I mean, that's up to Stacy, but the numbers, if you're saying a hundred and fifty max?
Six times a year?
Her email asks for five at one forty, so.
So, we were just taking one, so we-
I see that.
I mean, I would love to say that we're super reasonable, and if somebody comes back and says, this isn't working for me.
Right, she comes on-
Um, however, you know, you just heard a bunch of people say, you guys made some regulations back in nineteen eighty, and I don't see, you know, why we should ever revisit something that some people in nineteen eighty made, so, it's possible that whatever we do will wind up sticking, it depends on-
So, um, do we wanna sit on this for a month, or do we wanna, I, I'd like to see it rewritten with the language that we were just talking about. So, combining what we've already discussed on-
Do we wanna do things like the, um, the time limits, you know, the outdoor events cease by ten?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, we can use a lot of this. Noise impact shall not exceed sixty decibels. No fireworks.
I think that the reg in Michael's, I think the rural retreats has no amplified music, doesn't it, Vermont?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that acceptable, or is that, that seems like a pretty weird?
Well, if you're gonna have a wedding.
I don't know how you don't have amplified music if you have a hundred and fifty people. I mean, these days amplified music is, it could be like somebody's little YouTube speaker that they stick on the wall.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 it is, it is, and the way they can get it, I tell ya.
I think it makes more sense to put a noise limit, a volume limit.
So, just leave it there, remove that, and let the noise limit dictate, there's a noise limit above.
Yeah, and I think that we went around and around about this, I actually recall taking a big speaker out.
Yes, 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 yes.
Does, does the inn go till ten o'clock, or lunch o'clock?
Ten, ten.
Are they limited to ten weddings a year?
The inn, the inn?
Tent weddings.
Tent weddings, how many of the-
How many at the inn?
Yeah.
It's like fourteen a year or something? Somewhere near.
Fourteen outdoor ones, yeah.
Outdoor, yeah.
Well, Wendy's just writing music songs.
Oh, I know. Okay, anything else, um, so, we'll, we'll, we'll massage this, but I think we're, we're feeling pretty good about it, anybody else have any comments about it?
Should we share?
Sarah's, Sarah's falling asleep.
No, I could pass with the drive.
Is it Stacy?
Yeah, it's Tom, right.
But you're saying Stacy has, uh, she has more of a feel for what the, how impactful these kind of restrictions are, her particular business.
Yeah, her business.
Stacy and I have been emailing, so I can email Stacy what results here, move forward, we're, we're getting there.
I think Wendy still had something.
Much better than the last score.
One more, one more, any other public comments? So, Wendy has something here.
It's, it's a public request for clarification.
Okay.
I, I'm, from the minutes, what, where did we leave off with the five-two-six proposal? I'm not clear what you're reviewing and counting, um, if you could just clarify for me.
We want to know how many short-term rentals there are in the village and in the town. We want to know, um, of those short-term rentals, which people own them, and then where those people live. So, in other words, we want to be able to answer the question, um, how many of the, how many short-term rentals are there? Of those short-term rentals, um, how many are there where one person owns, you know, multiple instances of it? And then, for each short-term rental, how many people who are, for each short-term rental, is the owner somebody who lives in the area? Is it somebody who lives actually on-site, or is it somebody who lives elsewhere? And I would love it if we could get some nuance to that, because I happen to know that there are a number of people who spend half the year here, and for the other half the year, rent out, short-term renters, and-
So, what, this is what I need in clarification, I wasn't sure if you were focusing because of the, these regulations proposed for the R five, if you were focusing on that region, or if you were focusing on each, every, and, and this is based on what permits have been filed?
No.
It's gonna have anecdotal as well.
On going on to, um, short-term rental sites and trying to identify who is, who is advertising rentals in Woodstock.
So, it's a comprehensive look, and you voted on active support and timeline?
We didn't go on a timeline, we said, I'm sorry.
For the next meeting, isn't that what you said?
He said he might have time in January.
Yeah.
I thought he said he might have time in January.
That's what I was saying, December, January is-
But I would also add to that whether, if we can also identify if they're whole house rentals or just rooms too.
So, with this comprehensive data, are you going to go back around to a new public hearing?
We haven't closed, we haven't closed this yet.
So, this is a pause?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, so.
And this is a still alive topic where the public will be invited back?
Of course, always.
But it, it will be not given unnoted, it won't be a, a warrant hearing like this one was.
Will we publish our agenda prior to the meeting, will we?
We will, we can re-warrant this, uh-
We can re-warrant, yeah.
So, I was just, I'm just trying to get my bearings on my-
Yeah, we'll make sure that everybody knows about it, believe me, and, and I'm sure that-
If one person knows about it, then everybody's gonna know about it. If Macy knows about it, we're good.